You really like it, but it doesn't hold up well to a lot of banging around.
I'm going to observe a moment of reflection for council and certainly those in the, in the audience, if you're welcome to join in with it. Thank you. I am going to, I'm going to rise and pledge allegiance and I want to ask, can we show Walter, oh, it's better show Walter, who will lead us into the pledge?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call the, the committee of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. There is a call in present, so we will continue with business. First on the, on the agenda is our consent agenda, which consists of council meeting minutes of July the 12th, 2016, and the monthly bills.
Mr. Mayor, I've got to make, I've had issues with trying to get these things printed out, it wasn't the town's fault, it was my office, but there's one modification I'd like to ask for in the minutes, and it's under the citizen reports, it's a very easy modification, but I think it needs to be in there. It's under mine, under section D, or subsection eight, under council reports in section D. And I would ask Ms. Stipes, what I'd like to have, if I could, is that they, it says, many youth programs offered by the Parks and Recreation Department, including the outreach program Jill's Buddy Camp, instead of being a period, we can just put a comma, and, because I wanted to make, make it known last time as well, that we've, I've heard so many good things about the aquatic program, and about their involvement in outreach with youth in our area, that it can also say comma, in addition to the multiple aquatic programs geared towards the local youth. I'd mention that, and I, and I mentioned a lot of things, I know, but if I could just add that I, I don't want to leave them out, because both those entities together, it's very important their outreach with the youth in our area.
Okay. Do you have those, you have that down, Ms. Stipes?
Yes, sir.
At that point, there's no additional, so I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as amended with the minutes.
Got a motion in the second, any other discussion? Hearing done, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That'll be six oh, thank you. This is our citizens' hearing, when we, I'm sorry, this is recognitions, do we have any recognitions tonight? I don't think that we do, so we'll move on to the citizens' hearings, and open the floor to any citizens that would like to address council. We ask that you can either address us from your, from your seat, from your chair, or from the microphone, if you'll give us your name and address, and address your comments to the chair. Is there anyone here to, to address us? Yes, ma'am.
Jenny Bond, 106 West Main Street, Christiansburg. I'm Mayor Barber, and Councilwoman, appreciate your hearing us this evening. As you guys know, you approved a function for us to have the streets closed for the gospel singing August 27th, and I'll ask Mr. Buckman to hand out each one of you guys a flyer. We've got a little bit of a dilemma, and we're hoping that you guys can help us out with it. We chose that day last year because it was nothing going on. Heritage Days was the week before, and I've done some research, and I understand that Heritage Days tends to do every fourth Saturday of the month. We chose the fifth, well, it's not always a fifth Saturday, so we did go with the last Saturday. Because wanting to do the banner across the street, we went with the specifications that the town required, and bought the banner in order to put up. So, we hoped that maybe not changing the date too far, we wouldn't have so much expense in changing that on the banner as well. With that being said, this year Heritage Days, excuse me, falls on the same day as ours. And that's great, because Heritage Days is during the day, and we know that's a long time event, and we know it's a great success. Last year, with that happening, we had two weeks of banner, and we were asked to give up one of them, and we did. And then that left, they had the week of Heritage Days, and we had the last week for us. This year, of course, theirs is on the same day, and from doing some back and forth conversation, to our understanding is that they maybe aren't willing to give up any time for our banner to go up. And we're hoping that maybe you guys can help us with that. We're more than willing to split that time, but we just feel like we understand that they kind of came first, they've been here doing it longer, but again, we're a new event, so we also free nonprofit, we have businesses that are involved undertaking, or doing door process that the businesses have sponsored, we have sponsorships just as much, food trucks. Anyway, we're hoping that we can come to some kind of resolution on this, because we feel like it's just as fair for us to have, you know, time on that banner opposed to two weeks ahead, because our event is downtown, it is that day, so we're hoping that you can help us with that. Do you want to give them a flyer for what we're looking at doing?
You guys have seen all this, Steve?
Yes.
You just get to see who's going to be there now. Thank you very much.
Oh, good, thank you.
Thank you. Aside from that picture in the top right-hand corner?
Pretty good, though.
Right there.
You're talking, that you're splitting, can you, I'm not sure if I completely understand what you mean by that.
To my understanding, Mr. Buckman called and spoke with some people in the town offices about what we need to do, and I guess there's two weeks each time to have an event, and the banner is able to go up across Main Street. So, like I said, last year Heritage Days was the week before, so they had the two weeks previous to theirs. We only had a week because we gave up a week of ours, so that they could have two weeks. So, we're asking this year that, because I think from what I'm understanding is they're wanting the two weeks before the, the event, the 27th. Then that would put us two weeks before our event, actually four weeks. And with it being a new event, we're just afraid that that'll hurt a little bit, because, you know, with it being a nonprofit and a free four event, there's not a lot of publications and different things as much as we can do that we can do free. So, we're hoping that maybe what we can do is them have a week, us have a week, them have a week, us have a week, something like that. I mean, I know that's an aggravation, taking it up, putting it down. One other question, are the banners stackable? Do we have processes to do that with? I've never seen that, but I'm just curious if it's obtainable.
I was going to wait till you're done and ask a dumb question, but that was my dumb question.
I guess the...
They're not stackable, we don't have the means to do that currently.
Right, yeah.
Okay, one other question that's not very smart either, is somewhere else we can hang up, you know, down at the other end of the street.
Well, if, I'm sorry, if I may, I wasn't offering a smaller event at the town hall, but, you know, our event is more on the upper end, and we feel like Main Street is kind of where you get the most sight and the viewing. I didn't even know we were able to put it at the town hall, but, you know, we've spent $1,000 on this banner, so, and we could have went online, we could have done something cheaper.
I found that fun, towards the other end of the street down there.
I don't know, I don't know if it's a possibility.
We don't have, currently, we don't have the means to do that.
Nothing there.
So, last year, the events were within a week of each other, so I take it, you all were through the last Saturday of the month last week, or last, last year, correct?
Right.
Heritage Days was the previous Saturday?
Right.
And so, the previous, so we'll just, for the safety of our, the 20th, or so, that week up to Heritage Days, they had the banner, and then from the last, after that, you all had it for one week?
One week.
Were you all on the schedule last year before Heritage Days?
I don't know that it was before, we just chose the Saturday that we felt like it was fair to commute.
You mentioned you gave up one of the weeks, so you all were approved for those two weeks, so you gave up one of those weeks for Heritage Days last year?
Exactly.
Okay, and...
Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Is there any kind of policy we have on who gets what first, or a sager?
It's always been a first come, first served, and I think that this year, the museum was first in line.
Okay.
Now, there are options, you know, I know that you mentioned the, the position here in front of town hall, there's also one on the town square, that we can do the same thing, that, that can allow you that, that vision right at the intersections, and I think, Ricky, we can set that thing up so you can do it two, two ways?
Yeah, it's a smaller, I mean, you're talking about a banner that's across the whole street, right?
And y'all already got the banner, correct?
We've already got the banner, that's why I was going to say, so I mean that.
What is the, I mean, as of right now, though, the, you said there has been discussions with, between the town and the museum?
Right.
Well, I guess, I mean, I'll just, I initially asked, is that, is that what we're understanding? Is that it's just, that's not going to happen?
They chose not to basically give up the two, two weeks prior to the Heritage Day event.
So, basically, if it's to be given up, then council would have to make that determination?
Considering that we've always handled it on a first come, first served basis, I think you would.
Have we had this type of, these events before, overlap like this?
I think last year was probably the first time that we had a request overlap, or at least that anybody really seemed to mind. We probably had maybe, maybe one other event overlap, but it wasn't, it was like a banner for a month, or something like that, so it wasn't necessarily a conflict.
And do you recall last year, round me and put you on the spot, but you, you were here last year, and you deal with this?
Yes.
Was there, was there a two-week window where the gospel scene gave up a week to support the Heritage Days?
I think, I think they kind of did, yes. I think the museum, I think they still might have had another week. I can't remember. I think you did, I think the museum did give up a week, or, sorry, the gospel scene.
They gave up a week, and that was the week preceding the Heritage Days Festival, correct?
Yes.
Event? I mean, I, okay, I mean, council, I'm not, it's not time for the debate and everything, but just for what it's worth, we have two very, we have two successful events, and both of them are contributing to the town, and so...
And if I may, with due respect, until this dilemma came up, no one knew that it was a first come, first basis type thing, so when we planned anything that approved, I guess we just assumed, even if it was our fault to assume, that that would give us rights to have some kind of banner, and with us having the banner last year. So, we, it was made, and, okay, you're going to be able to do it, then it was, came back to us, oh, well, you're going to have to give up a week. So, you know, like I said, with all due respect, we had no idea, because we weren't informed when this was approved, that this would be part of the way that it worked, that, oh, well, they've got first come, first served, and they do that every four weeks, I mean, or every fourth Saturday, so, you know, some lack of communication might be there, but I can't help but think that maybe it's not completely our fault on doing that, so I hope that you guys will understand that.
If we can work that out this time, in the future, since you're going to have it the fifth Saturday, this won't happen periodically down the road.
It appears to me there needs to be some give on one of the two organizations, either
go to the third week, or you go to the fifth week.
Well, but there's not a fifth week every year, that's, I looked into that, and that's fine, and we will move ours. But again, this was already set and approved before we found out that this would be the dilemma, and how the things worked with the first come, first served. And like I said, last year, we did have give, we gave, so we're just hoping, you know...
So, you're proposing one week, the museum, one week?
Right.
The gospel singing festival, one week, museum?
And they can even have the week before.
It's a little effort on our end, this benefits the town, there's no point in pitting event first event. We can discuss this in the work session, if we want to create a policy for the signs in relation to maybe the event, but anytime you have a special event that's going to benefit our citizens, and this is public property, I think it's okay for us to weigh in, and I think it's a little effort on our behalf, but Steve, I believe that our public works can take care of, it's a little bit of work, taking one down, put one up, taking one down, put one up, but the benefits, to me, outweigh the sign for two weeks, so...
I, I think we're all right with the workload, it's just, you know, a departure from the policy of allowing for two weeks. The council is instructing that we should depart from the custom of having a two-week display, and what I hear from the, the gospel scene is they're comfortable with either week, and we'll sit down with the parties involved and see what we can work out.
You, you all sent that back to us in, in form of recommendation for us to act on?
Well, I, I, you know, I think that we can deal with the bigger picture of a policy, but there's enough urgency here that I don't know that we can push through a policy here in timely enough fashion that we feel comfortable with the policy.
That's right. Well, and right now, our first, we don't have another meeting of town council until the second week of August, which is going to be within two weeks of this anyway.
Right, and people want to know.
Sure.
Well, I was alluding to that we could work it out now, and then down the road, months away, we can sit down and discuss a policy. I mean, I think that works for everybody.
And as I said, we will, we'll find another date, knowing this now, and knowing that there's not a fifth Saturday. Like I said, we were trying last year just not hit tech, not hit Christiansburg home, not hit, you know, there's always something, so we were trying to be as careful as we could not for things like this to happen. So, this year, when we made it the last Saturday, just thinking, okay, we'll stick with, in just a couple days, then I went back and looked at the calendar, it was a fifth Saturday, and that's only every other year.
Well, if I recall, when we had the meeting to approve you all a couple of months ago, two, three months ago, I mean, I think the question was asked, is there anything else that's on the agenda, or on the schedule for that particular day? So, we didn't do this, we didn't want this to be a situation that would occur, and so, whether it's a procedure, or we need to keep track of what events are going on, or what particular days, or whatever the case is, we need to make sure we do that, and be able to report to council, but I think we even asked at that point in time, you know, it's just, we know it worked, we know it went very well, but is it going to create any friction, any problems? And we, crickets, there was no issues ever brought up at all. And so, again, I, I, both events were fantastic, but I, I just, personally, I fail to see why there can't be a meeting of the minds here to benefit both organizations, which are both benefiting the town.
And that's what we're hoping, that's what we want to do.
Let me, I, I'll say that this is a nice problem to have, okay?
It is.
That means we're getting a lot of, I mean, that's a nice problem to have, and that's not a placating statement, it's actually nice that we're having a discussion on so much, you know, activity. Another dumb question, what if you, would it be possible to have banners that are, they're the same size probably, aren't they? Are they the same size?
Do they go across the street?
Yeah, but there, I mean, the, the size, the length and the width are probably approximate.
Correct.
You know, could you have a sign that you see, you know, a banner that you see from one side, they're back to back, and then from one side, you see the gospel scene, and on the other side, you see her, you know, the museum? Mr. Biggs' comment is right, I mean, we, if we have, if we don't have a policy, but we have a custom, I'm not sure, you know, how strong, you know, what that means, and I would say, if you were my mother, I would say Heritage Days has been longstanding, it's been there, you know, for years. And so, if we had to say one or the other, I'd definitely say, you know, that that's been standing for some time, and the two weeks policy need to observe, but would that be a possibility to put both banners up, do you see? I don't know.
I don't know, yes.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, when people purchase the banners, they're usually printing on both sides of their want.
Well, I understand, I understand the want, but...
Sure, you, you absolutely could do that, but I would recommend looking at other locations in town, because it really is, you know, you mentioned being a good problem, there is going to be a lot more of that, we've already experienced that as far as, you know, putting them up, and the timing and stuff, so...
That's what I was going to say, Ricky. Heritage Days has had this, you know, time forever, and I, I don't want them not to have their two weeks, but I want them to have their two weeks too, it's somewhere else where you can make it work.
I'm not sure, we'd have to look, I mean, we don't have any polls that are set up specific for that, like what's downtown right now. We don't, we don't have to have two weeks.
Yeah, we just want a week.
And there is no way to put sign and sign?
And with that being said, please understand, we recognize how important Heritage Days is, we, we understand completely, that's why we were more than welcome and to give up last week a week. So, you know, we, we understand and don't want to cause any problems for Heritage Day, we know what a great success that is. But it just, it's, we feel like ours is going to be too, and everybody's got to start somewhere, even though theirs is being going on for, you know, I don't know how long exactly, hopefully ours will too, and then another one will come up, but if we do it another place, then we're going to have to fork out the money to buy new banners, and they're not cheap, especially going through where we had to go through to make sure that they knew the, you know, specific dimensions and things to fit the poles and to fit the wires, and...
We do have two...
Let me go home in just a second, there are five Saturdays in August, is that correct?
There was last year.
What, not this year?
There is not this year.
Not this year, there's four, okay.
Exactly.
And you, you would propose that your banner would be up one Saturday, one week, and then the museum would be the next, and you go back and forth for the four weeks, is that right?
We're more than willing to do whatever, we just didn't want ours to have to be a month ahead, and that's what was proposed, four weeks ahead, and three weeks ahead, ours, and then two weeks, Heritage Days.
What week would you settle for?
Um, we are, yeah, either one. So, that's why if they, it's not a matter of not letting, allowing them to have their two weeks, and that's not the question. The question is that we can at least have a week somewhere a little closer to the event that was approved, because also, we were sacrificing last year, we feel like it's only fair that maybe they sacrifice for us this year.
I mean, it's what I was thinking here, right now, you could just have a banner up for two weeks, is that correct? Two weeks. If the museum maybe would let you maybe the third week to have your banner up, then maybe the museum could get three weeks, instead of the, just the two, sort of as a compromise, the museum is going to give it up one week, but they are going to get an additional week. Is there a sort of follow-on trying to go?
Right.
Would that be, would anybody, do you think we could fly with that?
I'm not sure I understand.
Like, if they, I think what you're trying to say, I may be wrong, but they could have the first, say if we had a month span, they take the first, second, and fourth, and we had the third week, which they're still having the banner, the week of the event. We're only asking that we get one of those weeks ahead, instead of the first, the second week, you know?
Mr. Mayor, can we make this just a discussion item for this evening?
I'd like to think about it for a few minutes, and then we can discuss it later, that would be fine.
If I, if, I don't know if I mean...
I don't, I don't think the suggestion to stack the banners would work, I think you've got a clearance problem.
We ruled that out.
Yeah, clearance problem, anyway.
We need a solomonic decision here.
All right.
And while I'm here, if I may make a suggestion too, I don't know if it's feasible, we've had the events that we have, and we've got the, the signs that we put out that say the downtown streets are closed, had a customer make a mention, and I thought it was a great idea. Even though it says when they're closed, it doesn't say what's happening. Is there any way to put that on that marquee, that we can say, hey, there's Heritage Days happening, or, you know, the Wilderness Day?
Are you, are you talking about the digital signage?
Yeah, yeah, I thought that was a great idea for us to improve on.
We'd have to look at character count, how many words we can put on, that's the potential, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you for listening, we appreciate it.
The big role, the big role.
Oh, yeah.
The, the, the...
Yeah, we need it, thank you.
Thanks.
Does anyone else say that would like to address this matter?
Mr. Mayor, will we add that item of discussions, item seven of the discussion video?
Yes. With council's approval, we're going to move this to item seven.
I can buy that, too.
Yeah, can get your attentions, wouldn't it? Item seven, for further discussion. Anyone else to address council? Seeing none, hearing none, I will close the citizens' hearing. Staff reports, Ricky Born, Director of Public Works, provide an update for Public Works Department.
That's good. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, I'm Ricky Born, Director of Public Works. Tonight, I'll be going over our Public Works Citizen Academy. We do this, this year, we're going to do it on September 14th, and we do this annually, typically, for all the citizens and people that join up for the academy. This is a summarized version of the academy, I'd encourage you to come out the 14th of September if you can. We give tours of our facilities, we also have, you'll get to meet the people that, about the services that we perform, and also, there'll be interactive displays and everything with some of our equipment and tools, and, you know, around the shops and stuff like that, it's really interesting.
What day, what day is the 14th? Is it a weekday or a Saturday?
It's on a weekday. It's September 14th, I'm not sure which day it is.
It's Wednesday?
Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, and what time is that?
Long Lake?
I'm interested, that'd be...
Yeah, I mean, what time does it start, end?
Six or six thirty, do you know that, Melissa Buckner?
Yeah, you guys will all be getting invitations to the full citizens' academy, so how all the information will be...
Okay.
It's going to be coming, sorry, it didn't happen for you. All right, introductions, again, I'm Ricky Born, Director of Public Works, I've been with the town for 15 years, been with Public Works that long, been the director since 2012. With me tonight is Jim Lansonese, he's Assistant Director of Public Works, and Ryan Hendricks is also part of the leadership team, he's been with the town about three years. Our mission, Public Works Department is committed to providing quality services to all town departments, residents, businesses, and visitors in a reliable, efficient, and professional manner. Public Works promotes safe, positive, productive work environment for all of our employees while striving to maintain the infrastructure through the development of innovative and sustainable work practices. By pursuing these goals and through continuous professional development, we ensure excellence in public service. Our vision is to be a recognized leader in providing quality services, innovative solutions, and sustainable infrastructure to the community while offering continued professional development opportunities for our staff. And we really put a lot of emphasis on professional development, over the last, at least 10 years, there's been a lot of, a lot of growth within our department as far as technical competency and trainings, professional development, and stuff like that. Our values are the customers, responding to requests in service and friendly, fast, and efficient manner, soliciting feedback in order to provide effective service, and better understanding their needs. We also value the employees working in teams, communicate openly and honestly to support each other in their efforts, open to and seek new ideas and technology to better provide the services that we perform. Recognize that the customer is ultimate judge of our efforts and success, and the effort is paramount. This picture here, we call it Station B, and it's termed after, that's in one of the interesting facts that I turned, handed out to you guys, but this used to be a wastewater treatment plant before we turned it into our facilities, so Station B was the term of the waste treatment plant when I was there. Our actual waste treatment plant is located on 2557 Crab Creek Road, that's off of Silver Lake, off of that area. So, our department's responsible for construction, operation, and maintenance of the entire town's infrastructure, although we're trying to move away from more of the, more of the construction and move more towards the maintenance to be able to keep up, but we maintain streets, water, wastewater, stormwater, the facilities, which is building maintenance, traffic signals, signs, and pavement markings. Interesting note on that, we, we actually make all of our signs in-house, a lot of people outsource that, trails and walkways and bridges. Our department's organized into four different divisions, administration, field operations, which includes streets and utilities, wastewater operations, and then we have general services. In the administrative division, I've listed a few things in each 20 slides, but on the physical side, operating budget is just over $15 million, and it's approximately half the town's operating budget overall. And within that, we do annual budget proposals, payroll expenditures, and so on. Personnel, we have 100 full-time employees in our department. Some of the things that's required with that many employees are evaluation, recruitment, training, and professional development. Responsibilities, continued for administration, the programs that we have, we're responsible for a wide variety of those, snow removal, street sweeping, leaf cleanup, spring and fall cleanup, planning, annual action plans we create each year, solid waste comprehensive plan, landscape master plan, which is, you'll learn more about that as we go, that's kind of in infancy stages there, capital improvement planning, and within safety, and that's been a huge improvement within the last 10 years within our departments, there's been a lot of growth with what we've, efforts we've put into safety. We've created a strategic safety plan, a lot of, majority of our workers are VDOT, flagging trained, several are work zone specifically trained, safety and health achievement recognition program, this program here, we started this year, and we should be completed by the end of the year and actually recognized within OSHA for that, which is a huge accomplishment for our department. Field operations, within that division there, we have concrete, which includes sidewalks, repair, maintenance, and replacement of those, street maintenance, asphalt, we have approximately 250 lane miles of roadway that we maintain. Traffic, sign signals and stripings, we have 12 traffic signals that we maintain in-house, over 6,000 signs, which include regulatory guide, wayfinding signs, over 500... Over five hundred miles of striping and pavement markings. Over sixty acres of mowing, and over three thousand miles of street swept annually with our street sweeper. And I've got a couple pictures here of the projects that we perform within that division. One of them, you guys are, should be pretty familiar with, with the columbarium at the cemetery.
And Ricky, the street sweeper, I know in years past, we've had problems with it breaking down. I know we had a, I think we had a new one a couple of years back, but.
We did.
Going well? It's not, uh?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, it's been a big improvement. Appreciate that.
Hey, we can ask you, uh, which twelve traffic signals are there, or ours? And which one is the VDOTs?
Like, uh, name them off the top of my head.
We didn't let you know, you told us there's a test involved in this.
I can get most of them, but. Uh, VDOT, I'll give you the exception. So the ones VDOT maintains, at the rec center, they do those. The one out on Route eight, as you're going out of town. VDOT maintains that one. And then ones next to the mall, they do all the pepper spray in there. But outside of that, we did the majority of the rest of them.
You'll do the one down near the parking ra, uh, does the state do it?
Uh, that's, that's VDOT two.
Okay, yeah. Alright, thanks, buddy.
You're welcome. Uh, also, under Field Operations, Water, we have over a hundred and fifty miles of water line that we maintain. Over seven hundred fire hydrants are in our system. Wastewater, we have over a hundred and fifty miles of sewer line and over four thousand manholes. Water booster stations, we have, uh, four booster stations, six water tanks that we maintain. Utility locations, we have over, have over three thousand missed utility responses annually that we go out and locate lines to prevent any damage to them, things like that. And, uh, the picture there is just an example of one of the many water breaks that we report to each year. And that's about around thirty to forty each year that we, we respond to. Uh, General Services, we have fleet maintenance, facility maintenance, warehouse, and solid waste falls into that division. We have over a hundred vehicles and equipment that we maintain with three mechanics. Uh, Facility Maintenance, they have ten facilities, which includes about twenty-five buildings that we maintain. Warehouse includes fifteen hundred plus items in inventory. We have one main shop at, uh, Station B that we house most of our stuff. But we also have rolling stock in another satellite location at the old Wade's, Wade's Lane landfill. An estimated value of around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we keep in inventory. Uh, Solid Waste and Recycling, we have over eight thousand tons annually that we pick up, uh, for solid waste. Over sixty-five hundred residential customers and over two hundred and fifty commercial customers. And we now have five recycling drop-off sites with the new Camry site that we added most recently. Wastewater Operations, pre-treatment laboratory operations, biosolids. It was designed to treat six point six million gallons and the fifteen million gallons peak flow. And treated over one thousand sixty-five million gallons this past fiscal year. Land applied one point five million gallons, which is two hundred and thirty-four dry tons. And no violations for seven consecutive years, which is a, a very big accomplishment. Uh, these are some of the special events that we help support that come through town. We just talked about that a little bit earlier. Staff credentials, I mentioned that a little bit earlier about professional development and the efforts that we put into that. And this is some of the things that we've done. But we have seven Virginia Class Five Water Works operators, one Virginia contracting officer, which ties into procurement and purchasing, sports with finance. Four Virginia Contracting Associates, which is in the same line. Uh, one manager of environmental safety and health through the National Safety and Health Council. We actually use, uh, through North Carolina for that. They have a really good program for that. Uh, and I won't read through the rest of those, but again, I just want to emphasize that we put a lot of effort into, uh, the development of the staff and training and things like that. Uh, some of the memberships, uh, that we're involved with, groups that we're involved with. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Ricky, but those traffic signals, uh, so we maintain, you said twelve we maintain?
That's correct.
And, uh, the, uh, the signal, are they all actuated now? Or, or Fleeger and Radford Street, those, uh, West Main Street?
When you said actuated, you mean?
Actuated meaning not on a timer. I mean, the old ones are on a timer, and those have been on a timer, but I noticed some sensors up there, some video detectors now. Are those actuated? Or, put it this way, at two in the morning, if you come up, is it going to give you? Is it, is it prompted by traffic that's at the signal? Either through magnetic loops or video detectors?
Magnetic loops is what we still use. We don't have any video.
But they have magnetic loops at both of those?
Uh, we have magnetic loops throughout every signal that we maintain.
Okay, because those were on timers for a long time, right?
And then there's still, just to confirm, there's still timing involved with those. So once a vehicle pulls up, goes up.
Yeah, okay.
But no, none of the old school timers works. Just timing down to go out.
But everything has, is demand-driven too?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
In terms of your presentation, you've got to be impressed, don't you? I mean, what a super job that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
And of course, you know that we get from citizens, the two biggest things, the snow removal and then the fall and spring cleanup. And that is going really well too. That's what we get there, we appreciate all your efforts there.
Thank you, we definitely take pride, especially in the snow program.
Now, I have one more other comment though. Downtown.
Uh-huh.
Can you tell me how that's come along and, and what do you think the completion date is going to be on that?
I would have to defer to Jim, I don't know how much you know, but I'm not sure about the completion date. Not sure about that. The, we, uh, were the contractors doing that? We're, we're not even involved.
Your contractor is doing all of it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not doing any of it.
And that they have some trouble with pipes or something like that? Is that why the, it's gone a little bit slow?
I, I think these have troubled a little bit of everything.
Okay. Well, you guys don't have a ballpark idea on.
We've, we've gotten some information.
That information was sent to you last week in the memo from Mr. Biggs.
Okay.
He's addressed all those issues the week before, so. But I think September one, September seven sometime is the wrap-up date. Okay.
We have a twenty-two thousand people, and with one or two exceptions from time to time, we hear perennially, uh, the feedback from our citizens is fantastic about Public Works. In fact, I told Mr. Biggs coming into the job that, I mean, that's, you're the front door that most people see. Your, your folks are the front door that people see, you know, out in their neighborhoods and stuff like that. And it's fantastic, so, you know, the training is good and the professionalism. There's, you know, I pulled up, they don't know me from Adam's House Cat, to pull up when there's a water line bust or something like that. And they're just, your staff is, uh, you know, they represent the town very well.
Thank you very much. Brad, a definitely good staff to that.
This is just the state we've figured back on. Brad is, is, um, you know, you're available twenty-four seven. Something happens, and that's usually where your dire needs are. Personal, from my neighborhood, I mean, you, you guys have been up there two o'clock in the morning cutting down trees in the worst weather and driving home in the teens on fallen branch, I remember years ago. And I said to the council, it was probably twelve degrees outside. There was a water main break, and you guys were out there working. Ten o'clock at night, and I didn't even feel comfortable at night.
If you go out and talk to them, yeah, they're very professional and, you know, just represent the spot, represent everyone very well.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
I want to say how generous your staff is. On many occasion, on the occasions that I've been out observing water line breaks and digging, they've always offered me a shovel to go down the. I appreciate their generosity.
That's actually part of the procedure.
Is that it? Okay.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, you guys are great, and you have a chance right now to be heroes too. If you can make out of the sign, work somewhere else.
We'll, we'll work on that.
I'm kidding, I'm serious.
Thank you. Any other questions, Sam? Court, you good?
Thank you. Thank you, Ricky.
Next on the agenda is a report from Wayne Nelson, Director of Engineering. Ooh, that's good. Special projects regarding current status, uh, of matters related to the NRV Regional Water Authority. Mr. Nelson is out of town, and Mr. Biggs told me that he is going to handle that.
Yes, sir, the, the purpose of this item on the agenda this evening is really as a lead-in to next week, uh, excuse me, August the second's, uh, Water Sewer and Solid Waste Committee meeting. We'll, we'll be discussing the item more thoroughly. But what we wanted to do is leading into that and knowing the importance of the item and, and knowing that we have an important meeting at the end of the month, we wanted to go ahead and give the full council briefing on the matter. Uh, really what it has to do with is the implementation of the Joyner Agreement and the, uh, the water agreement, both of which were included in the agenda packet, uh, through the NRV Water Authority. And there's some projects that have been contemplated by that group. Uh, what we're finding is that the, the cost of the projects is escalating. It's about three times what was originally looked at, uh, now at about twelve million dollars. Um, and then, uh, at the old water plant, there, they've had a engineering analysis done of the condition of the, the property and the works. And they find that it's significantly dated and, uh, that there's a very sizable investment that is going to be necessary. And so what we want to do is make the council aware that this is an item that is being evaluated and examined and will have significant potential cost implications for us and for our water customers going forward in the form of needed maintenance and capital improvement projects.
Steve, can I ask you one quick question about that? I know we're going to discuss this more in about a second, but just for council, for the citizens. Actually, two questions. First off, the, um, capital improvement projects, are these for, um, to build redundancy in the system itself? Or is this to, um, actually improve upon frankly dated and aged, um, and dated and aged system or certain components of the system?
Really both, but more the, the second thing. Um, and, and, and my understanding of the engineering analysis that's been done today, we are vulnerable in terms of resiliency or a lack of redundancy.
Yes.
Uh, in the works, but, uh, that is made all the more critical by the fact that, uh, the, the, uh, pumps and equipment and the infrastructure is showing significant age and degradation.
And the same question I had is the, um, majority of these improvements, do we know, or I should say majority maybe, but, but the larger scale improvements, do we know where they're taking place at or what particular customers that they're? I know it's going to benefit all, especially under redundancy, but.
That is identified, the, in terms of the line work.
Yes.
There, there are two major segments there. Um, and a portion of those, um, uh, projects would be to support directly to the, the town of Christiansburg in terms of a redundant supply. But, uh, really, the underlying, uh, purpose is to provide service to Montgomery County residents.
Mr. Biggs, this memo that's in the package, I did look at this, is dated August second, twenty fifteen.
It was originally created with the expectation it would go directly to the water sewer and solid waste, um, that's fifteen, should be sixteen, I'm sorry.
Okay, I didn't pay much attention to it because it was a year old. So that, that was.
The date slipped through on us.
Okay, so this is.
This is the current.
This is current.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I thought you were going to brief us on what, okay. Okay.
You're good. Any other questions? And again, we have a public hearing.
Right, is the twelve million dollar cost, that's an estimate right now, that it's increasing from there, or?
Well, knowing that we went from four point nine to twelve, I, I, I wouldn't characterize it as a known and accurate number at this point. I mean, it's the number we're working from, but it's not, it's not one I would necessarily want to hang my hat on.
That is a four-party, five-party agreement that all would share into?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay.
But I, I believe the four million dollars is what was projected when it was presented to us.
I was going to say, this could be a weakness in the engineering or the document that was provided to us then.
We had considerable discussions on Joyner for.
Well, I know.
A long time.
But this is a factor of three.
Oh, no, I'm saying that, and that was our concern, was that we didn't want to, uh, be involved. We, we wanted to be reasonably cooperative, but we also didn't want to be involved in a situation where we're simply subsidizing development, frankly, in the county to the point of where we're exacting increasing amounts of money from our local citizens. But cooperation was important, I mean, we talked about that a lot.
Okay, anything else?
Just that, uh, on August the thirty-first, we'll be having a board meeting, and that's when all of this really, I think, comes to a head.
But our meeting on the fourth will.
On the second is our committee.
Will involve this.
Right. Now, there'll be a, I think, a more thorough report coming from, uh, Wayne Nelson.
Okay.
Okay. And that's the solid waste water.
It's a lot going on that night, I believe, I mean.
It's pretty full of generated committee.
Eat before you come, guys. All of them will be closed when we get out. Okay, thank you, Mr. Biggs. Discussion by Mayor and Council members. I would like to move an item up the docket, which is a recommendation, a reappointment of Tacey Newell to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Ms. Newell's term expires eight thirty-one sixteen, and we tabled this matter on the twelfth. Ms. Newell, as soon as she is reappointed, is leaving for North Carolina for some business. So, uh, she, I, I told her I'd try to get her out here as quick as we could. She delayed her plans from leaving at ten o'clock this morning.
She's here, right up, she's here.
Yeah, she's here.
She's right here.
So I'll, I'll put that in the form of motion, or we can just vote on her reappointment.
Second.
Certainly.
I'll make a motion.
Do we want to debate for now?
No, 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 no. Alright.
I'll, I'll move that we recommend, I'll move that we appoint Mrs. Newell to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I second.
Motion to second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard? Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six oh.
Yes, sir.
That's what I got.
May I make a statement about Ms. Newell?
Yes, she's here, you stand up.
Yeah, real quick, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals oftentimes in the past has been a rubber stamp or a backdoor to get something done that, uh, the town Planning Commission and council does not think is appropriate. It's been a backdoor to get approvals, and Ms. Newell is a watchdog, and she doesn't, she's not a rubber stamp individual, and I appreciate that. And I, I do watch those things, and the DZA oftentimes can be a backdoor to, well, council said, no, I'm going to DZA, and we'll get, we'll get what we're asking. So I appreciate the fact that you're a watchdog for us on that board.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And can I say one other thing too?
Protect the town's interest and make sure that we're not brought into litigation.
Yeah, Ms. Newell is also on the Planning Commission, and everything she's involved with, it's a hundred percent. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for.
Well, I appreciate you. For helping out of your schedule. Drive safely. Proposed amendment to the sewer use ordinance in regards to sewer limits. Public hearing was held on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen.
This is the item that was previously discussed, and the action date was deferred to this evening. I think it was codifying some requirements and things that had already been put in place.
Those are reflected in the minutes of the twelfth, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have any motion? Move to approve?
Yes, sir.
I second.
Motion to second. Any comments or questions? Mr. Stipes?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Let me six that, thank you. Next on the agenda is the appointment of Andrew Warren, Planning Director, to serve as subdivision agent.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is just continuing the realignment. We took similar action with regards to zoning administration. We feel like the operation and the competence of the department and just delegating work to the proper individual justifies this change, and so we recommend it to you.
So he'll be attending the street committee meetings when we have subdivisions. Excellent. I'll make a motion, we appoint Mr. Warren as, Mr. Biggs has recommended, to serve as our subdivision agent.
Second that.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Mr. Warren's here tonight, if we're not familiar with him.
He's a great asset to the town thus far since his tenure.
Very much so.
Absolutely.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Next is resolution for the renewal of the VDOT fiscal year 13 revenue sharing projects. Resolution is being presented to council for a second approval as the request of VDOT. We signed this thing, what, two years ago?
I don't know, I'd have to defer. Where to talk?
Actually, it had approval, I believe, back in June, but VDOT, the resolution template that they sent us, they had left out a budget item at the bottom, which is now on the one that you see, the last, be it further resolved. They just asked us to add that item to it and re-sign it and send it back through.
Did it cost us any money to do that?
Not tonight.
Does it cost us additional money over our prior commitment?
I'll move that we approve the resolution.
I second.
Any, you got a motion to second? Any comments, questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is six oh. Report on the bid process for the Brown Church and Lucas project. Mr. Biggs, is that yours?
Yes, sir, it is. What we'll begin doing is on these major capital projects, once they bid out, we'll bring back to you a recommendation of award and seek approval for items. Now, this item was included with the adoption of the budget. You'll see the engineer's estimate is included in the bid tabulation. The low bidder is within the engineer's estimate, which is always good news. You'll see that the low bidder has been qualified by the engineer. Wells Construction Company was the low bidder in the amount of $944,879. What we would ask of you is approval to award bid, and in making that approval on the award to Wells Construction, the amount specified, we would ask that you authorize a 5 percent construction contingency. What I like to do in administering these projects, we know that we're going to have some found conditions, that's always going to be the case in any kind of project. We like to look for a little leeway there of about 5 percent. If the change orders and contingency exceeds 5 percent, we would come back to you for further project authorization.
So we're pretty much looking at approving about a million dollars there.
That's a modest contingency too.
It is, and you know...
Recently.
I mean, we can pretty much figure on consuming at least that, but I like to go ahead and get and approve construction contingency. That way the council knows that if we begin to exceed that, you're going to get a report back on the status of the project and understand why the, you know, the change order is coming in, the cost may be going up.
I appreciate the information, Mr. Biggs. And I would move that we approve the bid as presented with the 5 percent construction contingency fee.
Second. Got a motion in the second? Any discussion?
Mr. Biggs, I just have one question. In looking at what you presented to us...
Yes, sir.
And I, I mean, of course, I can't help but notice there's a pretty big difference between the high and the low. And not being as familiar with bid differences, is that pretty, pretty much a pretty normal range of high to low type bids?
It's not that unusual.
It's not that unusual.
You know, a lot of times somebody will throw a bid in in the hope that it's not going to be a competitive bid process and, you know, hope to make a living off of it.
I understand.
And then occasionally, you know, we do have requirements for, you know, a minimum number of bidders, and we will work with some of our contractors to make sure that we can meet that requirement. They may not particularly want the, you know, the job, but they'll put a bid in just to make sure that when, you know, we go to bid opening, we've got to be qualified.
Is it, and just to give us one more question to piggyback on that, the engineer's assessment, I'm sorry, the engineer's estimate that we received on this, which is where we're bringing that 5 percent contingency in, is it that normal course of events as well to have just one of those underneath the engineering assessment?
You know, the engineer is probably all too often the low bidder.
I understand.
In these things. And it is a tough economy right now in terms of construction in the sense that everybody is very busy. And coming out of the recession, a lot of the smaller players who would be subs to projects really don't exist anymore. So the, you know, the costs that we are seeing are escalating, and that's, you know, a regional thing to the southeast, not just a localized thing.
Thank you very much.
This is, this is a very good, this is a very good bid spectrum right here, I can tell you. Yeah, it's eight bidders, that's, or seven bidders, and it's pretty tight. I do, this is in my bailiwick, and this is a good, that's a good bid.
This is outside of mine, that's for sure.
The best engineer's estimate is your number two guy. Your number one should be a little lower and be right on it.
Yep.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Let me six oh, thank you. Next is a request to reallocate police department special funds for a vehicle purchase. Mr. Sislin?
Ms. Tweedy.
Ms. Tweedy, okay, there you go.
Police department has several any drug funds. One is the state any drug fund, one is federal any drug fund, and those come from the asset forfeiture seizures. And those funds can only be used by the police department for law enforcement purposes. They have requested, and we kind of just budgeted a number within both of those funds. They're asking that in your packet, I think it says the state any drug, and we've kind of shifted that, and we'd like to ask it to be from the federal any drug funds for the purchase of a new vehicle for, I believe it's tax and car, tax and cars. So they're a little less expensive than the patrol cars because they don't have as much stuff all over them. And just to reallocate it to a capital expense. And since it's over $10,000, we need your approval to do that.
You said that was forfeiture based?
Yeah, it's all asset forfeiture, it's things that are already budgeted, already available. It's out of their special funds, so it's no impact on general funds.
I'd move that we approve the request to allocate special funds to the police department for a vehicle purchase.
I'll second that along with my congratulations to Mr. Sislin.
Yes.
The bar's set high, you gotta get some more stuff so you can get another vehicle next year. Have a motion in the second, any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the signage issue between the museum and the Gospel music group.
Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to pass on to you is, I was incorrect in saying that we might have a policy on the matter, I thought we had just a practice that we followed that Stringfield has provided a copy of the policy that we follow with regards to replacement of these banners. If you pass them around now.
Here we may, here you wrote the policy, I think, basically when, where the polls were on the poll. I think you actually took it to council a few years ago. It's basically addressing the size and shape of the banner, weight, and the two-week allowance. And basically the first kind of first service is just kind of in the policy.
Well, I would like to see the two parties come to terms on this, but if that's not going to happen, then I would weigh in in favor of the museum based on the policy and also the fact that the event and conflict this year is indeed the gospel scene, and I hope to live long enough to attend that again this year, and I hope we do it, but I would, I would recommend that we're consistent, and I would wish, again, I'll express, I'll finish by saying, I wish that the two parties could, could agree on this, but if they can't, I'm going to side with our policy and side with the museum to keep, to follow, to be consistent.
The idea that I had, I'm not sure if that goes according to Hoyle here, but this is what I was thinking, there are four Saturdays in the month of August. As far as here, the Gospel Center do not want to have the first two weeks, right? They would like to have something more current. And I would, maybe that the museum would go along, the museum could get the first and the second, and then the Gospel scene can get the third, and then the museum gets the fourth. So the museum would get three weeks instead of two, so they're going to get a little bit more out of it than they normally would, and the Gospel scene would get a relatively good date. I'm not sure how the two parties would think about that, but I, I'm not sure how everybody else feels about that, but I could run with that.
My question was...
Should I just see, should I shake your head?
My question first would be, is there any other, are there any other events that are planned right now that would be utilized in the first two weeks of August?
No, there's none.
So there's the only events in August happen to be both of them on August 27th?
No.
And then I'm certain we do have a working master list of when these things come in and are approved, correct?
Yes.
Because I guess, in the future, I just, I don't want council being a position of having to ask me, is it going to conflict if we could just, because I look at this as, there's a certain term I'd like to use, but I don't want to, don't want to say that, but it's just, there's two great entities, and it really, I feel like that's much to do about, I don't, I mean, these were nothing, because it's not about nothing, it's about something very important, I want to respect our policy always, but I feel like that this is something that nobody really, I was unaware that these both, these overlapped, I didn't know, and I think that may have, we may have had a discourse with them differently. I also appreciate the fact that my understanding, Mr. Wingfield, is last year that they gave up a week. So they were in the exact same position last year, that the museum is in this year, and last year we had a compromise that worked for both entities. And this year, unfortunately, the entity that recouped last year a week is not willing to, again, and you know, we had this policy in play last year as well, but we still went to the Gospel scene and asked if they would be willing to give up a week, and we did, and they did. And I think that would frankly be what I would expect, is that we would work together. But again, I don't want to go against policy, I don't want to rebel against policy, but it does frankly, personally, just bothers me that we, that this can't be worked out in some way and that it is forced to come to this, this position, and that's not a failure by the town, I'm not saying that at all, Mr. Wingfield, I understand the position we're in, but I feel like the entity would have, hopefully would have stepped up and maybe presented something. But I guess, again, we're somewhat stuck. All that being said though, is there any, I mean, aside from sticking with the policy, Mr. Biggs, is there anything else that we could do that would help us to get behind both events, which are, in my opinion, getting behind the town of Christiansburg?
I don't think that there's a ready solution to this. I know that Stringfield has worked with the parties and tried to work this out and find something that would work for everyone, and we may be in a position of having to choose a, you know, a win-lose situation to some extent. But, you know, we're not in a position to be able, I think, to safely and appropriately install new poles for mountain...
Right, right, I'm not suggesting that at all.
Does, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you go.
Does the suggestion about using the first two and fourth week for the museum and the third week for the Gospel scene, does that, is that something we're able to do?
I mean, logistically, we, we can handle that, yes, sir.
And I almost looked at it.
Even though it exceeds our, our policy right here for two weeks?
Two weeks. Yeah, I think, I think the council's going to have all the authority it needs to depart from that if you think that's the right way to go.
Well, and I personally, I like, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what you're saying, I appreciate what Mr. Hubbard said. I personally would like to see, if you're going to do that, the first, third weeks would go to the Gospel scene, and the second and fourth weeks would go to the Heritage Days. I mean, that to me makes, makes good sense, and that way both of them are adequately presented. But, but in the future, I think, I would ask, I know it's more stuff for y'all to do, but we could just be made aware when those things come up, just, okay, hey, this is an overlap, so we can potentially head off any problems, because I, again, I don't want to be repeating one entity against the other.
It usually is not an issue.
Right, it's not, it's not an issue.
Because, you know, in, in the past, when there has been a conflict and there's been someone there first, it stayed, I mean, it stayed the same. So this, this came up and it was, I really think it was two groups not willing to not take no for an answer. But I think we can work this thing out with them, and I would suggest, I, the movement and placement of the sign, I know it takes a little bit of time out of public works to, to do those things, so I would be more the, hell, I don't care, just do it, but we need to, we need to do what we can do to help them. I would also suggest to the Gospel scene folks that you go back and reconsider as additional signage on the corner, on the square and in front of Town Hall, and those are, what are those, three by six? And they're very inexpensive if you go to the right person to do.
Can you comment to, from the floor, that's already been taken by Heritage Days, they have those.
Okay, well, very good.
So that's why we're...
Okay, okay, that's fine, that's done.
Mr. Barber, I think what Mr. Hall said has some, something to it about going to, one going the first and third, and one going the second and the fourth, and maybe I would, I could go on that, and maybe give the museum their choice of the weeks that they, if they want to get the second and the fourth, and the first and the fourth, they can, you know, give them that, that opportunity. I could support that.
You know, we've got a horse that's getting ready to go on the country, and I think what we need to do is decide at this point, since it's come to council to approve, that we need to make the decision. Do you, I, I don't like the shifting back and forth, if you're going to put one of them up for the first two weeks, that's fine, but I hate this every Monday morning, the guys have got to come downtown, they got to take this sign up, they got to store it, they got to, they got to remember to do it the next week.
That's your job, that.
Well, no, it, well...
Yeah, it is.
I mean, it is to an extent, but if it's a project...
This is a one-time exception that we've ever had in this, and we spent an hour discussing it. I agree with Cord, I mention it, every other week, first and third can be the Gospel, second and fourth can be the Heritage, it's a one-time event. And we'll add, I want to see those museum lamppost banners up on Main Street though, at least a few weeks out, because I know we missed some banners a few months ago, towards the end of missing it a bit there. But Cord, I can go along with that. Steve, I believe you said you could go along with that?
I could, yeah.
I'll make it in the form of a motion.
Let me, let me review though. All right, so we're saying the Gospel scene is going to get the first and the third, and the museum's going to get the second and the fourth. Is that what we, is that what we're all saying? I can, I can go along with that.
Dale Jamie, you go with that?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I've already asked them if we could do that, they wouldn't agree to that.
Well, okay. Well, in doubt, we're not going to get into a public discussion on this, but the minute, it has come to the council, the council will make the decision. If the council decides to do the first and third for one, and the second and fourth for the other, then that's what it will be. There'll be no negotiation.
There's a motion on the floor, I'll second it.
Got a motion that we will give the museum, no, the Gospel scene the first and the third, the museum the second and the fourth weeks.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded a couple times. Cord, I think you both motioned.
I did.
Okay, Henry, have a second. Can we, would you please call it off?
Well, I can't believe we're going to have dissension on this. I'm not going to support the motion, I have absolutely nothing but support for the movement here, but if this was my mother again, the, the decision, the other applicant, the Heritage Days, has had that expectation in place, and their event is not in conflict, and unfortunately, I might be able to support it, but it's for the sake of being consistent.
Okay. And Brad, and I do, I can appreciate that position, but I just want to mention too that, again, what moves the needle for me is there was a similar situation last year, and it was resolved appropriately.
I'm very disappointed that they haven't been able to...
And that, and that's really what, and I'm, I agree with Mr. Mayor, I hate that we have to be in a position to do this. All that being said though, in the future though, if I do, if there's going to be a conflict in date, especially two weeks, within two weeks of one another, if we could just be made aware of that, because that might go into my determination whether we approve certain dates, because I don't, I, we have two great entities, and I just don't want that to happen anymore. I look forward to not coaching this year and going to the Gospel scene and going to Heritage, I just don't, I feel like that we're all, we're almost creating a mountain out of a molehill, and I don't want to do that when it's really benefiting the citizens.
Okay, then, Madam Clerk, if you'll poll council and vote your conscience, guys.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
No.
Well, well, that's a tie vote.
Yes, sir.
I will vote yes. It's broke the tie.
I never thought the most contentious thing we would have would be two. And I have to admit, and in Brad's mind, that is such a great problem to have, though.
It really is. Okay, thank you. We'll move on with that. Mr. Wingfield, you notify the museum if they're not here now and being notified. Thank you. Council reports. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir.
I don't know why, but we're just going to let you go.
You go right ahead. I don't, excuse me, I don't have a thing to report from the fire and rescue department. I contacted them, they had nothing to report. I do have something I'd like to put back on our task for this. A few months back, I brought up our application, which, which has a block to ask if you have been convicted of a law violation. And I would like for us to look into this to see if the possibility of removing that question. So since we now have a HR director and a new town manager, I'd like for us to look at that. And be at them, on the application is eleven, Diaz and David.
And that question specifically says?
It says, have you been convicted of, of a law violation, and it includes traffic and crime?
Right.
And most, I mean, the push has been to remove that question from applications.
Okay, very good. Mr. Biggs, I assume you'll report on that to staff tomorrow, Thursday, whenever?
We'll be glad to discuss that. I'll probably want to step aside at some point with Mr. Bishop and get a clear understanding of it.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. I'd like to reopen at some point us, up into the people in the marketplace. You know, whether we need to take a trip down there or what. But wasn't he supposed to come up here this?
He was working through the chamber, I have not heard anything. The chairman will be glad to follow that up.
Yeah, please, sir, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
What time do you have, Mr. Mayor?
Well, how much time do you need?
I said, what time do you have?
I got it.
I just wanted you to, I know what you're going to say, mark it down, I have nothing to report.
My pen quit writing on that one, guys.
We can request it be on quarter minutes.
Okay. Brad? Mr. Stipes, I'm sorry.
I have nothing to report?
Okay. I thought you were going to skip me and go.
Oh, no, no, no.
Regional, other than, Regional Commission is canceled this month, and I'm letting Councilman Collins know, and I'll reach out to him and let him know as well, since they're our newest board member. And Sam, I'm glad you mentioned the, the, our to-do list, so to speak, for council. I'd like to put this, the banner on there, too, I mean, so that we can discuss it at a later date.
Okay.
And that's it.
Mr. Hopper?
Well, I hate to break the streak. I just wanted to report something here from the Aquatics Center. If some, if some of you people have not had a chance to go to a swim meet lately, there's going to be a big one this, this, this weekend. They have nine hundred and thirty swimmers there, and they fielding about fourteen hundred spectators. And this is the Roanoke Valley City County Championship, and they're coming up here to swim in our pool. Another thing about the pool is they're going to have it shut down for maintenance, and the dates for that are going to be the fifteenth through the twenty-sixth of August. And I wanted to bring out, too, I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with Bill Beecher, but Bill has been, he is ahead of the competitive part of the, of the pool. He sets up all these competitive meets, he helps run them. I mean, if you've ever been to one of these meets, you see sometimes they got the two pools separated, and they got two meets going on at the same time. I mean, it's just unbelievable, really, and everybody, the majority of people are volunteers. Anyway, he's getting ready to retire, and they're going to have a retirement little party for him, it'll be August twenty-eighth, and that's going to be from five to seven, and I'm sure that he would appreciate some, seeing some people from council there at that.
Can I say something over there?
Sure.
With my children at swim, when Bill coached, and we've met with him several times between the Aquatics Center Board and council, he's just an incredible person. And he was an incredible hire, hats off to you, Terry, but my kids love swimming for him, and we definitely plan to be there for that.
It's just a walkthrough, you don't have to stay there the whole time, it's from five to seven, but, you know, you go in there and stay a few minutes, and we'll walk, so you don't have to be there all the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it it?
Yes, sir.
Is it it? Are you sure?
Court is my leader.
Court over here about to bust, he forgot something. I'm not, I'm not going to call him back. You're done, bro. I, I would like to say a couple of things. First of all, I, I would like to, again, if I haven't already, I would like to commend our Public Information Officer for keeping us up to date with everything that's going on. I look today, and if you'll look, we've had thirty-five posts on items that are happening within the town or involving the town, and we appreciate that. And, Mr. Biggs, I, I really appreciate the weekly updates that you have provided.
Updates, the weekly books, the weekly books are fantastic.
But it's good, it's good reading, and, and we appreciate that. And it's not that we didn't get it before, we had it maybe in another form, and without consistency. So it is nice to, on a, on a Friday afternoon, to, to kind of look back and see what's going on within the town.
The staff was very eager to contribute to that. And we discussed putting together a procedure, and that's the key, is that, you know, we just have now a regular routine of it. They have been very forthcoming with information, it made it very easy to put that together.
Very good.
Can I ask a question of town manager before we conclude? The last item, which I was very pleased to see in our agenda packet, Mr. Biggs, was the new suggestion or proposal that we revise our health insurance policy?
Yes.
What action do we need to, I figured maybe that would sneak on our agenda tonight, or?
Right, that, that is really, based on our research, we don't find that there is a basis in adopted policy for that. It is not a part of the employee handbook and discussing the item with council members as well as with the, with the staff. We think it's been practiced. Once upon a time, years passed, it wasn't that unusual for insurers to stipulate that in order to deal with any issues of pre-existing conditions, which of course, ACA, that is no longer relevant, there is not an exception for existing conditions allowed in group health insurance any longer. And so, you know, with that particular item, we would ask of the council that you support going forward with, with the change, that rather than have a sixty-day waiting period, we would allow new employees to enroll in insurance the first day of the month following their hire. The financial impact on us, really, given that we are self-assured, self-insured, is really negligible. Basically, when we pay premiums on, on our employees, we're paying them into a pool that we then utilize for claims made. There would be a very small administration cost associated with that, but really, in the context of salaries and benefits, it really would not be meaningful. We think that that would take a lot of pressure off of new employees in dealing with that, might help us with recruitment. So really, what I'm asking for there is your, your agreement, support, coalescence, to do something that really we will be working out as part of our plan with our insurer more so than any kind of change to the employee handbook or anything like that.
You don't need official action from council?
I don't think it's required, but I will tell you, what we intend to do is bring back to you is a package of recommendations or revisions to the employee handbook, and we would then incorporate this into the employee handbook.
And that's what I was going to ask you, there, there's no utility behind having a sixty-day waiting period whatsoever, correct?
Really isn't.
I mean, a marginal cost savings, and I mean negligible, I think is the word you used.
Absolutely.
And as far as the handbook and having that not in it, I can, I was, that's my next question is going to be, assuming we have the handbook to represent the fact that we would have new hires eligible the first of the month of the, the subsequent month of when they were hired, and you're going to be bringing those things to us in the upcoming months or so.
Yeah, Dave Bromstad, the new HR director, myself, are working across the larger staff to find opportunities, we think, to strengthen the handbook. I could have brought that item to you this evening as a single amendment to that, but it really wouldn't make sense knowing that we're going to be bringing back a package of recommendations.
But all that being said, that we, we, you're okay moving forward right now, that we can just, we're not, we're not, that's not a policy we're enforcing whatsoever.
That's correct.[1619.13]